Getting to that slide thirteen, you can see each department and how the expenditures have come in. Public Safety and Human Services, each stair stepping while your other departments were kind of going back and forth. The Debt Service, when you was when did the refinancing of those bonds, that's the reason there's a great spike in that. Flipping to page fourteen, this show general fund expenditures and revenue compared, the green being operating revenues. Did have a three point two million dollar operating surplus for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, so you did, you did put money in the bank and that's a good thing. The next slide is what shows that increase and that's fund balance. Every municipality in the state of North Carolina, as well as our nation has gone through some serious natural disasters, and we've had ours with Hurricane Matthew. The reason the local government commission stresses fund balance is to get these municipalities and these government entities through those disaster times. You get refunded amounts or reimbursed hopefully through FEMA, but you still have to make payroll where people can't come in and pay their taxes or pay their water bills. So you've got to be able to supplement that and fund balances have to do it. You also maintain fund balance as a local government commissioner or state requirement of eight percent, you're well above that. As that next chart sixteen will show, the fund balances in the thirty percent range. So slightly below the state rate for other counties in your population size, but still heading in the right direction. The next two slides seventeen and eighteen just show a pie chart of the revenue over sixteen and fifteen, how each revenue source makes up the total revenue. Again, I'm not going to read each one of these, I know you've just gotten it, so I do make myself available at any time that you've got questions on any of these slides. But I know Lisa's dashboard is extremely helpful that y'all get on a monthly basis and mine's just a summary that kind of throws it all in here, as I do, quick and to get y'all back out of this meeting. But nineteen and twenty is another pie chart that shows where each department is in the total budget. Slides twenty-one, top stock water fund revenues, it does a five year comparison, you can see water sales has, have been growing, y'all know you've had some infrastructure expansions, buying certain areas, so you always want to see growth in, in your operations for all your proprietary funds, because they do have to maintain profitability as any business would. Solid waste, you can see the revenues and waste collection, waste disposal, back and forth, and those have to do with the amount of bills that go out for structured units or for structured parcels. Moving on to slide twenty-three, this just shows the revenue over expenditures, there was a fifteen thousand dollar surplus in your water fund. The budget, and this is on what they call General Excepting County Principles and not on your budgetary accounting process or accounting basis, but to mention back to your budget, your revenues did exceed budgeted revenues and your expenditures did come in less than what you had appropriated. So the water fund did very well for itself, solid waste, did have a thirty-eight thousand dollar deficit, however, when you look at the budgetary accounting basis, it pretty much came in as was budgeted. The revenues and expenditures were under, but did not go into fund balance, which is always important. The last two slides deal with property taxes, the collection rates, being the green one is slightly below the state average, but has increased over these past five years. So the next slide is the all key important one, as I look at any governmental fund and that's what your tax base is. Two thousand and fourteen is a spike, but that's the year that we did, or the state did the North Carolina vehicle system and it all, there was about two or three, four extra months in billings and that threw out a pretty large spike in revaluation. However, fifteen leveled back off in two thousand and sixteen, was the first year after reevaluation, I know y'all heard about that and bit with that in detail, and that did show a decrease in value. You want to see this tax base grow, because that means that your industry is growing, they're putting capital into their businesses and your economic development is drawing new industry into your county, so that's extremely important for your general fund in order to build, to pay for the services for your community.
Mr. Chairman, one question on page eighteen.
Yes, ma'am.
You have zero investment. Is it because you had it before?
It's just so small, it's not measured on the chart. They're there, but they're just small.
And these are what, bonds or something like that?
They're, they're just, everything is invested in North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is administered by the state and it's, it's paying what, half percent?
This current month is at point seven miles a term and point three seven on the cash.
So in total, it just isn't nothing.
I'd like to make one comment back on the previous discussion that we had, because I like for everybody to leave here on a good positive note of trying to correct. If this was a business in I own, then my suggestion would be to go to department heads where there's a problem and go to supervision to pump them up and say, look, come up with some recommendations, I need to hear how you gonna fix or attempt to fix this problem and come to Mr. Martin with a plan. But I would put that on each department head and say, this is our issues, the commissioners have concerns and they want answers and it appears to be something that's going on from year to year and we need to see how we're gonna resolve this. And that way you know firsthand what you're fighting and what you're up against and they will know. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question on page twenty-four, and you were shooting Brian on the star, just making some notes and I may have just not heard you, but we were talking about the revenue in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and then I'm just looking at this chart here and I, again, you may have said and I apologize if I disappeared, but what was the significant drop there in revenue, operating revenue versus expenditures? Why were we having so much going out in fifteen and sixteen and not having as much come in? What was that?
In thirteen, if best I can recall, there was a, a large amount of billing based on the parcels of Renee, are you still back there? If I say it wrong, please correct me, but it seems like at one point in time, the solid waste fees go out on anything that has a structure on it. And that was a year where some, some bills were just processed. You kind of, if somebody gets a bill, they'll question it, but if you don't get a bill, they won't question it. So it was probably done in order to get people to come and say, no, that structure hasn't been moved off, they've cut the power off of it, so the billings went up in order to...
In thirteen?
Yes, ma'am.
So that was more so like account receivable situation?
It was.
It was sent out there, you weren't sure, we weren't sure if we were actually going to get it in return, there was going to be dispute or anything?
Correct, and that's, that's why it has fallen in, in the most recent years, because the more correct information has come in in order that the structure fees go out correctly.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions?
Item B, since they approved the dispute, it's been all the best presented. My pleasure, the board.
I motion to approve.
I motion to approve, Mr. Preece, any discussion? On both say aye. Aye, on both. Thank you, Bernard. Item C is, I'm interested, ask for, if you want to period any additional certificates, please, I'll take that.
Good evening to each of you. At this time, I'd like to go over the six months, a speaking percentage of the year for December. On revenues, we've collected fifty-five point three nine percent of the budget and we've spent forty-eight point seven seven percent of the budget. On the jail construction, we're at, of course, we've collected a hundred percent of the money and we've spent sixty-three percent of it. On solid waste, we've got sixty-seven point five three percent collected and spent forty-four point six four. Mercy telephone, we're at thirty point five seven in revenues and fifty-seven point four three in expenditures. Water, we're at fifty-one point nine six in collections and thirty-two point four one in expenditures. Anybody have any questions about the dashboard?
No questions, thank you, Ms. Preece. And Ms. Renee, received before on my page, two thousand and sixteen taxes, Caroline on the property.
Good evening. The summary of Levy Uncollected Report was attached to your packet for your review beforehand. And pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute one oh five three sixty-nine, I present the summary of unpaid two thousand and sixteen real and personal taxes.
Any questions?
Is there a motion to, to receive? Much by Mr. Preece, second by Mr. Dallas. Second by Mr. Gooden, any discussion? On both say aye. All opposed. Item B, Ms. Renee.
The real estate now is a lien on the property and I was likely to consider for the two thousand and sixteen taxes to advertise in the Bladen Journal if not paid in full on or before March of fifteen, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Much by Ms. Cardell, say, by Mr. Preece, any discussion? On both say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. David Howard, since approved, North Carolina here, stand agreement.
Stephen, this is an agreement recommended for approval from the Page of Just Advisory Committee and the review by legal as well. This is North Carolina Health Information Exchange Authority, which was created in two thousand and fifteen by the General Assembly when they removed that responsibility from community care in North Carolina. What this is designed to be is a secure information highway across the state for healthcare providers to exchange information, and we've heard a lot about this, but this is North Carolina's official authority to make that happen. The law does require all providers who are going to receive Medicaid payment to sign up and get basically quote-unquote connected to this health information exchange, which includes the health department, since we provide services and get paid by Medicaid for some of the clients. The law requires this to happen by February the first of two thousand and eighteen, so we have a year. We're going to work with our electronic medical record vendor, PureMD, to make this connection happen over the next year, but we have to get the agreement put in place, because there will be some bottleneck of people signing up and getting on board. So this includes every provider in the state, not just health departments, it includes every doctor, dentist, et cetera, who has accepted Medicaid. The cost, currently the state is paying for this, but we're in the beginning stages, and as you heard, this is an authority created by the state, so the expectation in the statute is that this eventually becomes supported by receipts or fees. We don't know what that's going to be. The agreement itself is automatically recurring, which normally we don't like, but it's our practice, especially since we have a lot of contracts in the health department, to review those annually at the beginning of the fiscal year, whether or not they need to be renewed or not. When I learn that there's going to be a fee, it could be a year from now, it could be ten years from now, I'm not sure, Mr. Martin and my advisory committee, you all will be first, so that we can look at what the cost might be, especially since there will be a feedback loop to the legislature about what that cost should be and what's there to the counties and what the providers have to pay. Any questions about that?
So currently, though, there is no set fee, we have no idea what that would be.
Right, the language in the statute is very vague, it just says at some type and at some point it should be supported by receipts.
Much by Mr. Dallas. Second by Mr. Gooden, any discussion? On both say aye. Much by Brad Kim on.
Good afternoon, I come before you ask you to consider abolishing the Highway Safety Committee, which is a committee y'all point, I have for several years. These meetings have become very low attended with very little continuity, coming back from a few folks that do come. I'm asking you to transfer these responsibilities to the fire chiefs who meet once a month from all over town and let them bring up any issues they see in areas and we'll take care of it from that, from our end at that point, as we do currently.
Mr. Chairman, what are their responsibilities?
They just come, there's a sign down, stop sign down, there's a pothole, there's not a speed limit sign here.
Yeah, when it first was developed, there was a few citizens that would come here to complain about what Brad just said and we talked about it inside of where we're getting to get people out of community to, to be our eyes and ears in their district or areas, you know, but it's not panned out to be attended, people, they were not attended. So the fire departments are in those communities and they meet them up, so that's, that's what Brad's recommendation. I make a recommendation. Much by Mr. Preece, second by Mr. Bullock, any discussion? On both say aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, item twelve, Blaine Community College Board of Trustees, one commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we put Ashley in that position.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Preece, any discussion? On both say aye. Aye, all opposed. Airport Appeal Board, you got Steve Willis from Liston and Richard Brown from Bladewalk.
Reappoint Steve Willis.
What about Rick? I recommend Rick, he stays. Okay, you accept that?
Yes.
Okay, much by Mr. Gooden to reappoint these two gentlemen and that's just all, you seconded. Any discussion? On both say aye. Aye, all opposed. This, next one is Clarkton Fire District, and both of these gentlemen have declined to serve again, so does anybody have any names for Clarkton Fire District?
Yeah, we have a motion for Stuart Clark and Randy West.
Motion, we need to move Tony Parrish to place Chief Hunt, Quinn, Quentin McGee to replace Irene Ryle, Sheila Berkeley to refill, Dorisilla Wright's position, and Essent, Essent, Essen West to replace Stephen Harrelson at East Bladen and Sophia Singletary to replace Kristen Odom at West Bladen and Donald Melvin, a member of the Business Community Report. So I need a motion for County Commissioner and I need a motion for...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we nominate Ashley for that position.
Second by Mr. Dallas, any discussion? On both say aye. And then we need to refill, or need to nomination to, please keep Graham's law. Is that the only one? Much of the may to put Jimmy Smith there, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preece.
Put Jimmy Smith there.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
What's Keith Graham's? What issue?
I don't know.
He's aware.
At large. No more, no discussion, all favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. Okay, Southeast Community and Family Service Board of Directors.
Regret, all opposed.
I need to make a comment on this. This committee is five people and four of them minorities. Am I right or wrong? So I don't think we need to put, that's just my opinion, but if that's the pleasure of the board, it's all we're doing.
You want to diversity on all that boards?
Ma'am?
You'd like to have some diversity on all the boards?
Yes.
If possible. So you're saying now it's, it's five?
There's five people and four of them minorities.
Okay.
And it was, and Wayne Edge was sitting on that seat.
But Joe Rogan's off of that board too. Joseph Rogan's off.
His name's on this sheet.
But he's off the board. That's the reason I was asking, he's on.
But, hold on a minute, let me start it. My sheet says there's Wayne Edge, F.W. Newt, Joseph Roger, Mark Coleman, and Joseph Hank Curry. That's what my sheet says.
The reason, the only reason I'm saying that, I was at the meeting on the Southeast Board and I had to get off the board because it became a conflict with me and family relationships. And Joseph Rogan was on the board with me and he left that board.
Oh, I can go by this. Motion taken.
Yeah, motion taken.
Much by Mr. Cardell, say, by Mr. Preece, any discussion? We, we just, just think about that and then whatever the board wants to be found, I mean. Did I get them all? Okay, and the next, the third, the twenty, that way. The twenty, the sixth is going to do this, Greg.
Well, it sounds it's the second meeting of the month when you're...
Okay, and we'll do the Blaine County Nurse Room Advisor Committee, need two people. We'll look at the Health and Human Service Board and we'll look at the Southeast Community Board, that'll be the three, okay?
Could you, could you give the director of Southeast Community Board, find who the members on there, please?
We will, we'll be glad to.
Yeah, yeah, okay, you'll, there's the sheet right on, that's all I have.
Okay, I just wanted you.
Okay, Mr. Brad Martin, you have a rough day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like to review the calendar with you for the remainder of January and February. And point out that next Saturday, the twenty-eighth, a week from this coming Saturday, twenty-eighth at seven PM, the Bladen County Committee of One Hundred will have a casino night, and that was a fundraiser, and that will be held at the Cape Fear Winery and Vineyard in, in the industrial park. Also, on the thirtieth, the Monday at five-thirty, there's a special board meeting and that's at the Ag Center.
The thirty?
Yes, sir.
We don't have it on there, right?
I know, that was meant, that's...
And we, we kind of put that stuff together today and Marie and Greg can work on it a little more tomorrow, but as soon as we get that out to the commissioners, let's get out to them so we can be thinking about how we want to address those and look at some of the issues. There's some things that come to the top, so we've got some work to do.
We'll go to...
So as soon as we get that out and let everybody have a chance to look at it, we'll have, I think that'll be our meeting.
Yes, the five-thirty. Yes, sir, five-thirty, Ag Center.
Thanks, Greg.
Yes, sir, and then on the thirty-first, at six PM, the Southeast Partnership will have its annual meeting and that will also be at the Cape Fear Winery.
And if you have time, that's our...
Yeah, that is.
That's one up there.
That's North Carolina Southeast, yeah. Moving...
Reserve it if you want to go now.
Moving over to February, the board meets on Monday, well, actually at six, at eight AM on Monday, the sixth, there's a prayer service here that evening at six-thirty, the board meets. On Thursday, the ninth, at seven PM, the Blaine County Fire Association meeting will be held at the Clarkton Fire Department. On Friday, the seventeenth, from eleven AM until two PM, the Elizabeth Town White Lake Area Chamber will have a business expo and that will be held at the Cape Fear Vineyard and Winery. The board meets on the twentieth at six-thirty PM. The Saturday, the twenty-fifth through Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, the NACO Legislative Goals Conference will be held in Washington, DC.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Did we not receive a college partner phone, Attorney Johnson, that we was to meet with the attorneys, what?
You know what, that, there is a special, that, that's, well, that hasn't been, that was, that was on the consent.
Yeah, it came.
Yeah, it hadn't been approved at the time, discount, but that's a good point. If you will add your, it was approved in the consent tonight, so that's a very good point.
So what day is that?
That is our next meeting on the sixth, our regularly scheduled meeting, on the sixth at five-thirty.
So we're gonna meet at five-thirty?
Yes, sir. Thank you for pointing that out.
And will we meet at the Ag Center and then come here? Or we'll meet just right here?
That'll be a regular meeting on February sixth, and we'll just meet here. The meeting on the thirtieth is it...
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, is it here?
It's two, let me clarify, it's two separate meetings at five-thirty. The first is a special meeting on the fifth Monday, the thirtieth of January, at the Ag Center. That's a follow-up on our planning session from last week. The meeting that Mr. Cardell's asking about is on the sixth, which is our regular meeting night, and that will be here.
She'll be here?
Yes, sir.
At five-thirty.
At five-thirty, yes. Thank you for pointing that out. Moving on to item B, you may recall that a couple of meetings ago, we mentioned that NACO is, or actually the Association of County Commissioners is requesting counties to let them know about any type of federal goals that they have that would have a statewide impact. And we reached out to department heads to share this information with them and we really haven't heard anything. We also reached out to Cape Fear Valley and the only issue that they reminded us of is the importance of the, to the hospitals of Medicaid expansion. That is actually not a federal, that's more of a state issue that our legislature would need to, would need to consider. So you have the information as far as the federal priorities for counties, it's similar ones to, to recent years, support, promote sales tax collection, oppose unfunded mandates to counties, and so the basic ones that really apply to all counties and certainly we would want to see included in the, in the agenda.
Greg, does that also, is it state or federal that decides how they pay us? You know, they technically they pay us, like EMS and stuff.
Yeah.
Is that state or federal?
There was a thing in here about Medicare. It, it's kind of a two-part issue. The, the bulk of the money is determined by the federal government how it comes to states, but then states have a certain discretion, like for instance, the state chose not to participate in the Medicaid expansion. And so that impacts the revenue to medical providers and particularly hospitals.
So that impacts our EMS, the state?
I don't know that the Medicaid expansion does, but certainly Medicare and Medicaid revenues are a major source of funding.
I'm thinking that'll be one of those.
Okay. I'll, I'll check on that.
See, that was one of the state legislative...
Yeah, that was a state legislative bill.
Because you couldn't have EMS and everything to go back in place.
So it's that, it's hard to say. But states can...
It's, it's ultimately federal money, but it, I think the state may have some discretion.
Okay.
And moving to item C, I did want to let you know regarding the stepping up initiative that we've had some conversation about, I know Mr. Bullock had inquired about it some time back, and we actually had a person scheduled to come from Orange County before the hurricane that the sheriff had lined up. But there is a webinar that will be held on Thursday, February second, and I wanted to let you all know about that, if any of you would like to sit in on that and learn more about the stepping up initiative. Again, just to remind you, that is a program or, or an initiative to help address mental health issues for inmates in jail. And so it's, you know, certainly it's an important issue. The webinar will begin at two PM and end at three fifteen on February the second, and we'll have, we'll remind you of that and certainly we can have the webinar in the EOC. So if we find out if we have five commissioners who want to participate, we need to schedule a special meeting, so I will poll and poll you to see if you will participate.
February, so...
February second, yes, or Thursday. And Mr. Chairman, if I may just mention one or two other things. One is we placed a letter at your table letting you know about East Point's planned merger with Cardinal, which is another provider that will basically cover thirty-two counties. It'll be a provider that serves thirty-two counties. And so I had a conversation today with one of our, one of Blaine County's representatives on the East Point Board, Mr. Emory White, and say we may need to have further discussion about, about that issue here in the near future, and I'll certainly share more information with you as I have it. Also, I wanted to let you know that we have begun having regularly scheduled meetings with the sheriff and Kip McCleary with operations, Mr. Peterson and I, to talk about issues related to the opening of the new detention and law enforcement facility. And so there are a number of issues, operational type issues. And so one of the things that's been identified is the need for a part-time maintenance position to serve in that, to serve that facility. There is a great deal of technology-related work regarding controls and that type thing that a person would need to really have a level of expertise related to, and so we plan to come back to the board in the very near future to discuss the need for a part-time position. And really, I know the jail won't be in full operation until the next budget year, however, that person needs to keep up to speed on the operation, so it's really something we need to consider for the remainder of this fiscal year, so we'll come back to you on that with more information.
Mr. Cardell, I thought when we met and he came in that we, put a person, gave Robbie or another individual that was being delegated for that...
Well, for IT, that, that's, you're, you're exactly right, that was related to IT.
So now you need another half of it?
Well, this is a, this is a maintenance person who will work on issues.
They're running IT.
No, no, I'm just saying that those, the controls that, that operate, you know, flushing device type thing, they're not the traditional type of issues. The AC system, the heating and air ventilation system is very high-tech.
Who would they be with, the sheriff department payroll or would it be maintenance payroll? Or would it be Robbie's payroll?
Our discussion was that it would be general services under Kip McCleary.
So go through just, sir.
Yes, sir.
With that, like the performance, the scope, the job performance, that would be brought up?
Yeah, job description would be presented to, yes, certainly, that's exactly. Yeah, the job description would be presented to, yes, certainly, that's exactly.
The thing, Mr. Cogdell, I think the important thing that we're talking about there is that you're starting up a new jail and it's totally different than what you had, so we, we've got to have someone trained. And Kip don't have the manpower to send people over to be trained, but we might not need this guy, he might work in Kip's workforce versus the jail part-time. Just don't know what his job was going to be, but someone's got to have the knowledge, some carries up at three o'clock in the morning.
And we only have two, we have two staff members in, in operations.
We're going to have somebody part-time that's going to be running the place that high-tech part-time? That doesn't seem like it makes a whole lot of sense. If you can get the right person, we ain't going to need a full-time person, hopefully. So we.
Well, the good thing is that right now the, the jail is actually, you know, it's still open, so it's got worse mechanical parts of it, whoever is hired part-time or full-time, they're able to go in there and learn how it is, where it's at now and where it would be more of a preventative maintenance versus when something breaks and having to learn how it operates. So I do see the benefit in it that way.
So this position be ongoing though, it won't be like once you.
Likely, likely not, just based on the operational issues we're aware of in the existing jail, which I know is, is much smaller and it's much older. But they are just, I mean, they're, they're here almost every day dealing with issues. And a lot of them are issues caused by inmates and that type thing, not the normal traditional type building.
Do you think it would be ongoing position then, or they, is this, we're hiring a part-time for a part-time, for a length of, necessary?
Yeah, I, it would probably be an indefinite, yeah, I don't anticipate that it would be just a temporary position.
My question is who's requesting this person? Who has determined that we need this person?
As per who, as per who's requesting?
That's, that's Greg, myself, sheriff, and Kip McCleary. And we're talking about all operations in jail, we're talking about housekeeping, talking about everything. And that was one of the issues brought up. Hopefully, the conversation was you find someone that knows and experienced that wants to work part-time will save the county some dollars.
Have we checked, see our other calendar there?
It's full-time.
There, yeah.
Now, my question, I'm thinking, I'm saying if you're getting someone that's going to be handling that portion of the facility and you go hire in part-time, what's going to happen at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock? How you going to schedule this person?
He'll be on call, right?
I'm just asking the logistics of how you going?
Well, we don't know all that, but if the partner we hire is going to come in, if it's two o'clock in the morning, if it's three o'clock in the morning, then he takes off the next day if he's scheduled to work.
And, and Mr. Chairman.
It's going to be flex hours whoever does it.
And one of the things is.
And it might be a full-time, might be two people once we get to jail.
But the benefit to.
But we're starting out with part-time, that's our, that's our train of thought right now.
And the benefit of including it in the operations department is that hopefully all of the, the other two guys, the existing staff members will become familiar and have a good strong working knowledge of the operation of the jail as well. So it won't be just that one person that is able to respond to a call over there, but we do need some, a group that has a strong knowledge of it. And they're, right now they're dealing with so many other everyday issues that it's hard for them to devote the time to just concentrate solely on that one facility.
All of the thing I was saying, when you were saying IT person, high-tech, handling high-tech facility, I thought they would be reporting to Rob, but that's what I was saying.
It's not necessarily a IT person.
No, I meant high-tech in terms of the mechanic.
Okay, I was saying, why wouldn't they be reporting to Rob? To Rob, it might be two or two.
And Greg brought it, just so you'd be aware, we haven't done anything yet, it'll come back to the board before we decide there'll be a scope of work with it to talk more about, we're just letting you know some of the things that we're thinking about.
Okay. Because I was going to ask the same question on the jail when we were talking about, I think they asked for six jingles to start this jail.
Yes, sir.
And, but he said he needed ten jingles to start this jail, was that what you said one time? When y'all came in with the proposal, you needed ten instead of six. And we gave you six?
Uh, we're not, we're not getting in discussions about that, that we don't, we can't answer that right now.
Okay, I'm just.
But more to come.
He's coming over to jail.
Yeah, I just said more to come, I mean, I ain't trying to cut you off, but just more to come, I don't think we can answer that.
Okay.
And as soon as we find out, you'll be, you'll be one of the folks who wants to know.
I will.
So let's keep informing it, we know that, hopefully, we're trying to do tonight. And that's one of the conversations we had, and he wanted to share it tonight with the question, so we'll be thinking about it.
What's my friend doing so?
Well, as soon as the board approves, we got the director, Kip's going to do a proposal, so we might do it the third or we might do it the sixth, vote on it. And then after that, we're going to look and see if we can hire. If the board approves it, if the board don't approve it, then we'll back it, so we'll have to do a different draft. And that the, the kind of the.
That's what we discussed, yes, sir.
So to come back once approved, we'll, yeah, no.
One, one more item, Mr. Chairman. We received an email today from the Association of County Commissioners. As you know, we, we talked about tonight, Mr. Scott discussed the complicated operation that Medicaid is. And we have over seventy-five, over seven thousand, I think it's close to seventy-five hundred recertifications annually that have to be performed. And that's the information that he was discussing that they audit. This is a statewide issue and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is having a meeting on March, I think it's March the second. You'll, we'll send information to share with you, but they are encouraging commissioners to attend and be knowledgeable of this information and the challenge that exists related to this issue. So I'll certainly provide more information to you in the, in the very near future about that. So I want you to be able to attend if you can.
When he was up, and Riley, wasn't that concerning the building resource that they put in state? That people not being in compliance with what the state has put in place?
That's part of it.
Or that we're not in line with what the state has.
Well, the state was, they were, there was a concern that the state was not in compliance with the federal government requirements. And so it was placing eighty million dollars a year in jeopardy for North Carolina to receive. And what that really means is for the counties in North Carolina to receive, because the cost shares between the federal government and the counties. So fortunately, the information that we received recently shows that North Carolina is doing much better in terms of its performance.
But they were saying the counties were losing because it wasn't built right.
Well, maybe so, I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
It wasn't being built right because it's North Carolina's.
Yeah.
Ready to send us some more information?
I will.
Here, we're going to go to Riley.
Anything else for the better on the Blaine County? Speaking of Raleigh, I'd like to make one comment, especially when the taxpayers are paying and sending us locations to be gaining ideas and sharing ideas on the Commissioners Association Board, we met last Thursday and Friday and I was the voting delegate. But I can tell you that there's a lot of things that have been presented by the commissioners to, as they say, the top of the hill for consideration of putting in the law. One of them, I think, that I'll just mention to you that will mean a lot, the juvenile. A lot of juveniles are getting in trouble, saying, and good examples at school, if they get in a fight, somebody calls the fight, but then both of them get charged. And then here's a sixteen or seventeen-year-old, got this tied to his record about his, of his life that then affects him getting a job with law enforcement or any good job, period. Unless it's a felony. Now juvenile, our recommendation to the state, and we're only two states out of all, us and New York, that were different. And now we're joined trying to do the right thing, juvenile will be changed to eighteen, that is the recommendation from the commissioners. And they should free up the courtrooms and the juvenile system better to give some of these people a better chance when they make a mistake. But I just want to present that, but there's a lot of good things done and I was honored directing this down there very well.
Much to the turn.
Okay.